The plat has been sent to all our, uh, people that review it and they've, we've asked them to get our comments back and the recommendation has those comments in it. It is recommended the Newton Area Planning Commission approve the final plat for Sand Creek fifth addition to the city of Newton Harvey County. Kansas contingent upon engineering staff receiving and adding of the instrument of survey or D, the instrument of survey which shows the point of beginning. G, um, we would want the cord length added to it. L, we want, um, anything that you would have to be added to it. And then we need a four-corner grading plan, um, and then retired or the required certificates, um, for C. We want them to add R to Denise Sturksen. Um, we now have a chair, so we would want them to add Carl Harris. Um, the surveyor seal was not on that. And then for the engineer certificate, we want Suzanne C.S. Loomis added to that. The other notes, Anderson Road should be Anderson Avenue throughout the plat. Um, minimum pad elevations need to be shown for lots one through twenty-eight through the plat. Uh, notifications and then all required drainage shall be submitted before being placed on the city commission agenda. And as of this morning, I do have more notes on the drainage. Call out the trash rack on the BMP plan, show areas that need to be vegetated either on the BMP plan or separate plant, planting plan. And then three showing calculations refer to section four point eight of the appendix G of the city's manual for post-construction. Best management practices for permanent pool volume, outlet type and size and trash racks types and size. We would ask that those be in the minutes as well.
Any questions for Justin or staff?
And I have added an eleven by seventeen in front of you for a visual and we also have it on the PowerPoint, but in front of you. Probably is a little easier to see what we're trying to do.
I had a question Suzanne, you might be able to answer. Um, I was just wondering between lots fifteen and sixteen, they have a water easement, twenty-foot water easement. Is that for phasing?
Between what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you Mike. Between fifteen and sixteen.
Between lots, I'm sorry, fifteen and sixteen. There's a twenty-foot water easement.
Right, that's for water line so that I can get it down to a future line that would be going.
Down twenty-fourth, okay. I just wondered, just unusual to have it between lot lines.
The people also along twenty-fourth have requested.
We've had some that have requested.
Oh, cool. To have time to city water.
I would make sure we have construction requirements to make sure they put it deeper in the side yard. Just as part of, as part of the construction, when you get to, yeah.
Justin, we had pre, was this the one that we had previously done sidewalks on one side?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I didn't see him on the plat, I didn't know which side.
Those are on the preliminary, they show them on the preliminary, not on the final.
Which side were they on? You remember the north or the south? Not that it matters, but.
I would, they continued on the east side and, or the west side, sorry, and then it'd be on the north side.
West side, north side.
Yep. And then it doesn't go down the cul-de-sacs from what I remember. And the applicant is here.
Oh, okay.
Questions for him as well, so.
Any other questions? You want to make, want to make a motion?
Does he want, does he want to talk?
Do you have anything to say?
Nothing to add, but I can certainly answer any specific questions. I think as far as the sidewalk goes. It's on the, uh, of the, the eastern, western, easterly side and then we'll probably follow along the northerly side of the. Actually, I'm, I'm sorry, it's on the, it's on the westerly side and the north side, yes.
Western and north, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Can, can you go ahead and state your name?
Oh, certainly. I'm Brian Lindaback, MKEC Engineering for eleven North Webb Road on behalf of the owners and applicant.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right.
So I'll make a motion to approve with all the additional requirements, um, to recommend final plat to the city commission.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion curtained. Next item is consider preliminary plat for Claussen second addition. I will recuse myself from this discussion since PEC, my employer, is doing the plating work for this. So, uh, Justin, go ahead.
Yes. This is to consider preliminary plat, application for Claussen second addition. As per the city subdivision regulations, the preliminary plat was submitted to the appropriate city staff and area utility companies for review, along with the requests that they forward proposed changes and comments. Those changes and comments were communicated to PEC who will provide an updated version of the revised preliminary plat incorporating the requests and comments. Staff continues to work with the applicant on a few items noted under recommended action. The preliminary plat now comes before the Newton Area Planning Commission for consideration. If the commission is satisfied that all requirements of the applicable subdivision regulations have been or will be met by the developer, you may approve the preliminary plat, including any required and requested changes. Recommended, recommendation, it is recommended that the Newton Area Planning Commission approve the preliminary plat for Claussen second addition to the city of Newton Harvey County, Kansas contingent upon engineering staff receiving of and adding of. K, um, the sidewalks need to be shown along the north side of the property. L, um, access future expansion on the northeast corner of the property would require at least one access. And then M, um, the sewer, they need to field verify because they got a sewer going through the middle of the property that at one point was, uh, disconnected and they need to verify that they'd be able to connect back into that. The, uh, fire marshal is concerned of the location of the hydrants, so we need to verify that those will meet, um, fire marshal requests. All required drainage must be submitted, um, before it can be placed on the, uh, next planning commission. And then I would also add that for the drainage report, show areas that need to be vegetated either on a BMP plan or separate, uh, planting plan. Two, show calculation for the dry detention basin, refer to section four point seven of appendix G of the city's manual for post-construction best management practices and provide a SWIP slash NOI for review and approval when available and prior to any ground disturbance.
We have Samantha Dillon here from PEC also, if there's any questions for her.
Hi, I'm Samantha Workins with PEC.
Oh, Workins, no, sorry.
Attending as part as the applicant and the agent, or the agent for the applicant.
So I'm, I'm just a tad bit confused though. Obviously that area has already been platted at some point in time. What?
It has been.
What's coming in front of us now that's different?
It, it's being, uh, basically kind of a lot split and added on, after it's been split so many, with a plat and you can only split it so many times before you have to replat it. So basically it's a replat, but it's not being replatted, it's being showing what the fuel center is going to bring in. So it had to show all the stuff on there because of the plat requirements. So it will be a fuel center.
So earlier this year, a few months ago, there was a lot split for the interest bank site. So now that we are adding the fuel facility at that southwest corner of the plat, now we have, that constitutes replating it.
Thank you. I was, when I got this, I'm like, wait a minute, this is already replatted. Wouldn't this be a replat?
Yes, and the, where the existing detention pond is today, that's where the fueling station goes. And then the detention pond gets moved over to the south property line.
Okay, okay.
Where you see reserve A on this preliminary plat.
Okay, well darn, that probably means we can't get rid of that stupid light there then, can we?
We did submit a traffic study, you're probably more than welcome to get a copy of and read it.
But it does not show the signal bus.
So for discussion purposes, I, I will make a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any others?
And KLM and other.
Yep.
Yeah, with, I'm sorry, yeah, with, with the other recommendations added.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained for me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks Samantha.
Can I ask a basic question here? What's the difference between a preliminary plat and a final plat, since we're looking at both of those? Like, how does that flow through the process here? We, we can talk about this separately, we don't have to have it during meeting if that's better.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
No, uh, they will submit a preliminary plat which has more of your water, sewer, all your, uh, utilities. There's a lot more on the preliminary plat that kind of gives you the idea of what it's going to look like and then the final plat removes all that and it's what will be, get recorded at the, uh, register of deeds.
And the revision process for the preliminary plats, like, it can come out of this meeting, we need changes, then it comes back.
Correct.
And then at some point we approve that for a final or?
Yes, yep, and then the final will come back to you guys and the final then goes to the city commission for final action.
What they do.
Clarification though, the preliminary plat doesn't come back a second time. We wouldn't, staff wouldn't recommend that it comes to you the first time unless it's a very small group of items that needs changed or unless you asked for a huge change to what you would see.
Okay.
And the preliminary plat also shows like all the, the topography of the existing site. It has a whole lot of information on it that on the final plat does not necessarily need to be shown. But of course, it's kept as a record copy for us here in our office because it shows where utilities are going to end up. Sidewalk like Commissioner Newell asked about, it has some items that are specific to the plat that are not shown on a final plat.
Right, okay, thanks for that.
Okay, next item, uh, consider special, special use permit for nine oh eight Trinity Drive.
Yes, it's a request to turn an outbuilding into an accessory dwelling unit and ADU. A special use permit may be granted for only, for a use specifically defined as allowed special use within a zoning district. The governing body may attach conditions to the issuance of a such permit as long as those conditions promote the general welfare of the community. The request uses, the request use in this case allowable within this zoning classification, but only by special use permit. This allows the governing body to impose any conditions it may deem necessary to protect adjacent properties. Special use permits should not be confused with variances which allow a property owner to deviate from the bulk restrictions associated with the given zoning classification and engage in an activity that is prohibited by the zoning regulations. An example would be reducing a building setbacks. The action to be taken by the planning commission following the conclusion of the public hearing will take the form of a recommendation to the Newton City Commission who has final authority to act upon the application. It is also important to include, include in the motion the reason, reasons for approval or denial of the special use permit. This need to be no more than referencing some element of the staff report. Special use justification, in order to justify approval of any special use application, the Joint Board of Zoning Appeals considers the following criteria. A, what is the location and the size of the proposed use in relation to the site, to the adjacent, adjacent sites and uses of the property and the nature and intensity of operations proposed thereon? The applicant commentary is a twenty by twelve shed converted to an ADU. B, describe the accessibility to the property to police, fire, refuse and collection, other municipal services, adequacy of in, ingress and egress to, and within the site, traffic flow and control and the adequacy of off-street parking and loading areas. Applicant commentary, very accessible from multiple streets. C, what utilities and services including water, sewer, drainage, gas and electricity are on the property? Please note with particular reference to location, availability, capacity and compatibility. Applicant commentary, water, sewage, drainage and electricity are available. D, describe the location, nature and height of the buildings, walls, fences and other improvements that relation to the adjacent property and uses and need for buffering or screening. Applicant commentary, a twenty by twelve by ten foot tall. Describe the adequacy and required yard and opening space requirements of signed provisions of the outline in this zoning ordinance. Applicant commentary, we are moving an ADU at least fifteen feet from the other building or fence on a wide open yard. F, what is the general compatibility with the adjacent property? Other properties in the district and the general safety, health, comfort and general welfare of the community. Applicant commentary, our neighbors are a long ways away behind multiple fences and we get along with them great. G, if applicable, describe the particular standards and requirements as prescribed in sections four point five of the zoning ordinance. Applicant commentary, we are applying for a special use permit to build an ADU. In considering this application and to the extent that the planning commission determines that the particular problems may be, be posed by the, uh, requested use commissioners must consider whether the imposition in the conditions, restrictions and standards may satisfactorily address those problems or in the absence thereof, whether the application may be approved in part or in whole, a denial of the application is appropriate only if determined that there is not adequate conditions, restrictions or standards that would be of a, alleviate the unacceptable adverse effects of the proposed use. Should the planning commission wish to approve the requested special use permit, it must find that the proposed use conforms to the general standards set forth above. In no case can a permit be granted if those proposed use will constitute a nuisance or a public health or safety hazard to the adjacent properties or the community at large. The commission's approval will be forwarded in the form of a recommended, recommendation to the Newton City Commission for consideration. The governing body, body may adopt, revise, amend or recommend by a resolution. If the governing body fails to act on the recommendation with a hundred and twenty days, um, from the date of this received, the application will be deemed to have been denied. Special use permits expire automatically without, um, revocation by the city unless the building permit is obtained or substantial evidence of the special use is observable within twelve months of the issuance of the special use permits. In addition, special use permits expire twelve months after the permitted use ceases or is abandoned. The requirements for public notifications for a special use permit have been met, approximately sixteen property owners were notified. No questions, comments, phone calls, emails or letters were received by the city. And I've added to the PowerPoint the location, um, what they're trying to do. You can see the house that is, uh, along the street there, they have a garage in the back and then the shed is right next to it right now. If you can go to the next one. It's zoned R1 which is approval for an ADU through a special use permit. Um, if you want to go to the next one. They're going to move the, uh, shed right now, you can see to the east there. At their, in their diagram, go to the next one as well. And this is what they would like to have the inside look like. And the applicant is also here to speak if you have other questions.
So this shed is on the property today?
Correct.
What is the, the construction? What's the material, materials of construction? Is it just a wood shed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, a prefab shed?
Uh, you would have to ask applicant that, I'm not positive on if it's a prefab, if they built it.
That is correct.
Okay, uh, can you come up to podium? We'll probably have a few other questions for you.
It's a sturdy-built, uh, prefabricated home.
Well, yeah, shed, yeah.
Mike, if you can have him state his name and address.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Uh, Dorian Funk, uh, nine oh eight Trinity Drive.
So this will be, you'll have just sewer hooked up to it, water just like, and electricity just like normal?
That's right.
Heat and air?
Yeah. Yeah, it's already got electricity. Uh, we bought this property a year ago and, uh, the previous owner had already wired it up and so it has lights and heating and air conditioning. And we would just like to be able to have running water in it as well, so that somebody could stay in there.
Is this easily accessible by the fire department in case of something were to happen?
Absolutely.
I would say off, off the twelve street, otherwise off of Trinity, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
But there will be no vehicular access to this?
No.
No.
Okay.
So, building code requirements for a shed are different than a inhabitable structure or habitable structure?
Yeah.
Correct.
So footings, are you, are you, do you have a design or plans to meet building code for footings?
Yes, yes.
They've met with David and I on that to go over their
Okay.
full scope on, to make sure they're meeting the twenty eighteen.
Yes, the UBC.
Yep, well, IRC.
IRC, okay.
Yes.
So what about everything? So that's footings, what about everything else like?
They'll have the minimum bathroom size and all that kind of stuff, yep.
Okay.
Kitchen size, yep.
Okay, so it'll meet all the building code requirements that Newton has?
Correct.
Yes, it has to meet code.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yep.
If I can ask a question, is that allowed?
Absolutely, yeah.
Will it be inspected?
Yes.
Yeah, is that by you?
Uh, probably David or I, yes, or, or Brian.
Yeah, part of getting the building permit, you'll have to stake it out and also verify that you have the setbacks, the backyard set, that you're off the backyard setbacks.
Yep.
Within your property.
Yep, yeah.
So because we have to, you know, watch out what happens to this property in the future, dot, and I know you kind of just read through it, but I, I'm not sure that I get it a hundred percent. So what happens to this ADU if they decide they're going to sell the property next year?
That was my question, how does it go transferring?
Yeah, what, what happens in the future?
It would go null and void.
Okay.
It, it's non, every year they've got to reapply for this special use permit, like we have other special use permits here in town. They're supposed to be reapplying for that. It wouldn't come to you, it would just come to us. And if they're not reapplying for it every year, then it goes null and void and they have to come back in front of you again.
Yeah, so the building, if it's not approved next time, the building would stay, but they couldn't have, have people living in it.
Correct.
Right.
Yep. All it is is an application fee, and there, and there is no fee to it, it's just an application every year that they'll have to fill out, that it's staying.
Neighbors have to be contacted every year as well, again?
It would not.
Okay.
Nope, as long as they keep it current.
Sure.
So.
And no neighbors had any issues, nobody?
I didn't hear from anybody unless there's somebody in the audience in the.
I had one neighbor tell me, he's like, in his exact words, "I don't care what you build, you could build a castle back there for all I care."
So is this going to have a concrete floor then too? Concrete floor?
Yep.
Yes, a concrete pad with footings.
Question?
I see your wheels, your wheels are turning.
I don't know that I have a question. Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm concerned only, I'm, I'm not against your project necessarily. I'm just concerned that this sets up, up, a standard.
This is the first one.
That's what I'm, that's.
Yep, since our regulations have changed to allow for an ADU and an R1, this will be the first one approved or denied. So, or altered in a way that you wish to see it. So what, as obviously a recommendation to city commission, so. Being new, would this be your rental? Would this be family? Would this be in case you get in trouble?
This will. Our ideal is that this will be an Airbnb as well as, uh, for, also for family and guests.
Sure.
Yep.
Users of the building for parking, can we just park along the street?
Yes, that's correct.
On Trinity.
Does approving a project like this set a precedent for future, uh, special use permit applicant applicants and that they would be able to reference this as precedent?
Sure does.
But that doesn't have any force in and of, in itself, the precedent.
Correct.
No.
Each case is individual, remember?
Yep.
So, um, so when you say this is the first one, was, was this ADU and an R1, was that a change that was just made when we made changes in August?
Correct.
This is one of those items that we had, a lot of people that would ask about this having an accessory structure. A lot of it has to do with people that are wanting like an elderly parent to be able to live there, but still be alone, you know, on their own, so to speak. And they weren't able to do that before, correct?
Yep.
But under the new regulations, this would apply, but it has the special use permit attached to it.
So like a, if you have a room above a garage that's habitable, does that fall under this also, or was that, that, this is a specific, like a different structure?
Right.
So that's what this is, it's not, it's different than if you finish a basement or if you have to finish your garage and move people in, right?
Correct.
Right.
No.
But a detached garage, you would have to have this permit as well then?
Correct.
Or a pool house with the same stuff?
Correct.
Okay.
For it to have the dwelling unit with, yes.
Do we have them in town?
I'm sure we do. And I think it's to help regulate them. This will also help the fire department know that they are there instead of people living in a garage that we are unaware of, then all of a sudden it goes up in flames and we just don't know about them. And it's, it's.
We actually have had a similar issue to what he mentions without the fire though, in this neighborhood where there were people living in more of a shed type structure.
Figure the yearly permitting at least, you're aware, and you can keep an annual tab on it.
Correct.
And then the structure is built to a standard that would be habitable.
Yes, so I guess my, my thoughts are, and, and nothing against your plan, I, i- i- if it was for a mother-in-law or somebody like that, I, I, I don't know which I'm going to vote yet, but I'd be much more in favor of it. When you start doing it for, you know, Airbnbs, we could have a hundred applications next month to do the same thing for Airbnbs. Um, we have group homes that they could easily add a shed to their backyard and add one more person to their group home type situations. I, I, I'm not sure where I lean at this moment, I'm just concerned about
Can I?
the rest of the community.
Can I respond to that?
Abs- absolutely.
You already have, you already have Airbnbs in this town doing exactly this, only they didn't seek approval. So, we just feel like we're the first ones to try and do it legally.
Mm-hmm.
And who's to say, it could be a mother-in-law house today, six months, it could then become an Airbnb, right? We're just approving this ADU, not an use.
Right, right.
So, you know, it could be Airbnb now and then it could change to mother-in-law house, I mean, vice versa, so it's really not the use, I mean, per se, we're approving this ADU.
As a living board. Yep.
And not every property could come and request it and it fit within the, it has to be large enough for there to be separation.
Also, you'd have public feedback, also.
Yes.
Somebody could come and be against it, a neighbor. So.
Yeah, um, do we have examples of other communities that if they run into this, I just wondered?
Yeah, we'd have to get that for you. I don't know the names off the top of my head, but definitely there are others that are doing it.
Just if they've had issues that we might want to be aware of, you know?
Yeah, I think that, you know, the registering of Airbnbs and things like that is a, obviously a different topic and not our topic to take on. That's commission's topic to take on.
Is adequate parking for four, five, six, I just, I ask about parking just because that's, a good friend of mine does this in Springfield and that's been the complaint against their Airbnbs, is parking, that you'll have, granted, this is not a large structure, so it's not like it's got four or five bedrooms and we've got twelve people max can fit in here. This is pretty small. And then with the fire department regulating like how many people can occupy it?
Correct.
Or have little occupancy? So you wouldn't have, shouldn't have that many cars parked along the street, which is a nuisance to the neighbors. But I know that's been their, their issue running.
Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, but so when they get, they get, they build it, it's in for a year, they apply for their special use permit or they come back to renew their special use permit. That's handled administratively, it doesn't come before this body, unless of course, if we received a whole bunch of complaints, then do we have the ability for it to? Unless, of course, if we received a whole bunch of complaints, then do we have the ability for it to come back to this group for them to hear?
I, I don't know, that would be a Chris question.
What's your timing on this? Are you in a big rush to get this done or?
We are. I know everybody's in a big rush to get everything done, yeah.
We're in a big rush to do everything.
Right.
Yeah, I was just wondering to maybe take a minute, see what other communities are doing and table this for a month.
According to our specs, we have a hundred and twenty days to make a decision.
Yeah, you don't have to decide tonight.
Okay, I thought that was for city commission.
Well, it'd be a total.
Total.
Start here and there, a hundred and twenty days.
Okay, and then we'll have a, maybe we'll have a full commission next meeting too.
If I can say one thing, it's, it took us over a year to find us a plumber who was willing to do the work. And, and he was willing to start digging a month ago. And then I found out we have to do this meeting, right? And I have to give our neighbors notice and that's fine, we can do all that. But I feel like we're, we're going to lose them. I don't know if you know anything about the, like the trades right now, but everything just like.
Oh, I do, yeah.
It's crazy, it's crazy.
Yeah, for sure.
It's like.
Do this the honorable way, we want to respect that too. I mean, I don't want it to look like we are not respecting that you were trying to come forward and do this in this legal way where others may have not.
I am concerned about precedent and thinking about how that affects the future. But in this case, I'm, I'm really, the fact that none of the neighbors have said anything, it seems like, at least in my neighborhood, people would have something to say if they were against it. So that, that, that seems to be, you know, at least in this case, a big green flag.
Right, right, I mean, if I said anything, so.
Is it subject to taxation by the city? Is it, is it more than what a normal outbuilding is? Is this a residence?
Well, we wouldn't decide how it's taxed. The praiser's office is going to do that.
Praiser's office can decide that.
Yeah.
But it's another dwelling unit, I'm assuming so.
Like, do we have the authority to set? How many people would be able to stay there?
You can make, yeah, as long as it's more strict than what the fire marshal would approve.
What's, why did the fire marshal approve for this one?
He hasn't even seen it.
Okay. He'll see the plans if it's approved.
Correct.
Right.
So Justin, the special use basically tell, we can set specific criteria out there regardless of what it is
Correct.
for them to follow.
As a recommendation, correct, and then, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So if we say you need to get a survey of the property or we need, you know, whatever it is, we to make sure we're comfortable.
Yep.
Just to keep moving forward. Mr. Funk, I know you, you've got a timeline, I know this is, this is new for us, you can tell we're struggling with it. I'd like to make a motion to table this till the next meeting to get more information before we move forward.
There's motion, second?
When we table it, do we have to have with, say with what other cities, I mean, you have to state what we want from them when we table?
We've already asked.
No, they'll come back with their.
Okay.
We can.
Unless there's any other.
I would just say, yeah, what information?
Sure.
For our sake, we would like to know exactly what you want to know.
It does not need to be in the motion.
It doesn't need to be in the motion, that's.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, we can call Justin tomorrow and ask him.
Give him the laundry list tomorrow.
Yep. Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion, second, any further discussion? Holders in favor, say aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
So now we need to.
So we'll see you in a month.
Sorry, thank you.
Sorry, yeah.
I'd like to let you know that the meeting is not on July fifth, it has been moved to July tenth. So it's the following Monday, just so you know.
And thank you for bringing that, be the first one to bring that to our attention. That was very important.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll leave that, I just want to double check so we make sure we are getting everything. You all want to know if other communities are having issues and what are they if they are, is that?
Yeah, I think what I'd like to know specifically, are there other communities that are allowing ADUs to be Airbnbs?
Airbnb specifically, okay, yeah.
Or, or are they just allowing them to be like a mother-in-law suite or something along with that line? Not, not something that's rented out?
Sure, sure, okay.
Okay.
And then we'll also find out from our legal staff too, if there are a bunch of complaints that come in, in the follow-up, can it come back for reconsideration?
We might make note wherever that is at in our planning and zoning book. Put a star there so we can have a conversation maybe about it if, if there's some things that we need to maybe tweak when we get around to that one, whichever one that one is.
Yeah.
You bet.
Okay, ready to move on? Next item, zoning regulation review, article eight.
At the July tenth, twenty twenty-three planning commission meeting, commissioners will be asked to provide feedback, suggestions and/or updates to article eight. And this is just for information only to bring back at our next meeting.
Just one question about this process, because this is, you know, last meeting I asked a few kind of questions about some stuff in article seven. And it was discussed briefly. And then we kind of moved on. You know, what, what is the process, I guess, that you guys would want? Do I need to, like, going back to article seven, when the discussion about, you know, streets without curb and gutter? Is, is that a discussion?
I think there's.
That I, that I need to make a motion to have more discussion about or?
My, my plan was, I think there's twenty-three chapters and I was going to come back with one through ten as a whole. Get that approved or look at those all again as a bigger picture to go to city commission and then do the next ten and get it that way, instead of waiting till all twenty-three and looking at it again. So bring it, bring it back halfway through.
And you're noting the items that have been brought up?
Correct.
So then you can discuss them as a group?
As a group again.
Thank you, I did.
It will all come back again before we do any, yes.
I, I saw the minutes and I didn't want to mess with the minutes, but I'm like, whoa. It was discussed, but we didn't really have a, you know, a meaningful discussion.
It'll come back as a full discussion instead of information only.
Thank you.
It'll be a, it'll be a topic.
We've been trying to take more detailed minutes because of all of this so that we make sure we remember the pieces too.
That's why I was asking to make sure if I needed to make a motion, if I wanted to have more discussion or not.
Yeah, no, there'll be more discussion.
Break it.
Okay, article eight.
There's nothing we need to do. Nothing? Till next week.
Do what?
Nothing to do? Nothing to do, just information only.
Oh, I thought we were reviewing.
Nope. Review it on your own time and bring it back.
Good, I didn't look at it very close anyway.
Yep.
Okay, development survey, next item.
This is for information only from our mayor who has written a letter basically saying that he's going to have the forget the name, the CDC take care of the survey that you guys were requesting at one point on what brings stuff in and what, what our hiccups are, so that survey will be done by them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally cool with that. I don't know if we need to modify a motion at some point in time since the motion was to bring it back to us. And maybe, maybe them doing it and then you guys bring it to satisfy, satisfies that, let whatever Chris decides.
Okay, good, good comment.
I'm, I'm totally okay with it.
I think we're okay.
Okay.
But we'll double check that.
Is the CDC a body of appointed community volunteers kind of thing?
Yes, appointed by the city commission. And they were discussing some of that too. And then when we presented that, presented that department head meeting, somebody said, hey, wait, this group has been talking about it too. And then the commission said, hey, we want to have the CDC go ahead and take care of that.
So we'll have feedback on the questions asked and all that then?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I guess, I guess that does bring up one question is what they bring to us, will that be a, a final thing at that point in time or? So if I, if I, if I want a certain potential question asked, do I need to get ahold of a CDC member and say, hey?
Yes.
Make sure this is in a survey or are they going to come to us and say, here, what do you guys think about this? Then go back and then finalize it?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yep.
I'm not sure that it's coming back to you. I thought you were asking about the results.
No, we want to make sure the questions that we have are asked specifically from issues we've heard.
Yeah, I would suggest that you, Arlen, are you not on the CDC? I thought you were on the CDC.
I am not.
Okay.
But I know a few people that are.
Yeah.
You have certain questions.
If you have specific questions, and we'd, I provided the ones that you had mentioned previously. We sent the minutes to them so they would have that information on the questions that were asked previously. It's just that it's kind of out of our control at this point.
Fair enough, I mean, I, I, I trust that they have the, the same thoughts that I have.
Yeah.
Just, yeah.
It's either you can reach out to them or if you have questions, email them to me or Suzanne and we'll get them to them.
We gave them some information to start with and then they'll revamp and do what they think is best.
Yeah. I'll reach out to them.
Okay. Or a city commissioner, I mean, either one.